Yes.
We've heard from John a couple of times, but it's been his favorite. And we opened in the summer on the weekend, so it was the meeting to go. He's at the Horns Museum. Yes.
Yes. All right, is everybody ready?
Yeah.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Pardon the agents.
I, the United States of America, and to give you a heart with which to stand, one nation, I am a God, and a physical of liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call. We do him after roll call.
Okay. Uh, John going here.
Jenna K. Law here.
Ken K. Law here. John Quinn's here.
Roxy and Tuck even here. Christine Minder here.
Now, which was?
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Thank you for this day. In God, I ask for that you just bless this meeting tonight, God, and give the Lord wisdom, give all of us wisdom and everything, all of Jesus and Amen.
Okay. Are the opening remarks? All right, that being said, let's review the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review, don't we?
Yeah.
The 13th again, the 27th.
One of those they work session.
Right. All right. Has everybody had a chance to go through the ones from the 13th of July, that is?
Very thorough minutes. Holy, holy.
Yep.
Not anymore.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of...
July 13.
Thank you. July 13 as transcribed.
Second.
All right. Hold on a minute before we take a vote. I gave you corrections, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That should be the correct.
Okay. All right, on the favor.
Aye.
Pose. You got it.
So the next ones will be more verbose.
Give it back after second. Did anybody have a second now?
Uh...
John did.
Thank you.
The other John.
The other John.
Two Johns.
John and John C.
No, Q. Do you?
Okay. I don't know.
I don't either.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review the work session minutes from the 27th?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of January.
January, huh?
July 27, 2023 as transcribed.
I'll say.
On favor.
You can pick, Robin, whoever.
Aye.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. Now, do you want to do the new business first or the old business?
Do you, Madam Chair?
Let's do the old business first so we can get it out of the way. The, um, the final, um, review of the impact ordinance. Is everybody all set with that?
Yeah.
No questions?
Okay.
No.
I make a motion that we approve the impact ordinance as on the proposed revision dated 6/19/2023.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a recommendi-- oh, we did this one. I make a recommendation that we forward this to the Board of Selectmen to forward this to the town attorney for review so that we can place it on a warrant.
Okay.
You can send that to Carol and she can forward along.
No, it'll be in the minutes. You can sign that if you want, but that's, uh...
Okay.
Where can the public read such fine ordinance proposals?
Have those approved by the attorney. It'll be online.
They can't look at it. It's, it's public, private information to the government.
Don't listen to them.
I don't.
I'm only kidding, folks. I'm only kidding.
Joe would definitely...
You know you're on tape here.
I know.
Just because the sun is not out, that means sunshine law.
I just wanted to see the look on your face, John, that's all.
I'm just wondering if someone has questions, they'll be able to address them.
Okay, now, the aquifer ordinance. Everybody read that when it was given out? All questions have been answered?
Yeah, we already approved this one, so...
We approved it. All we need to do is send it off to the attorney.
Correct. Um, what was I going to do? I can't remember. I was going to say something. Go ahead, keep going.
All right, so we're going to hand this off to Carol?
Yeah.
And she can send both of them off to the attorney for approval?
Yeah.
But, uh, John, to really clarify these things, uh, we could post the proposed, because we had to have a hearing on these.
Right.
But the, the attorney, my view actually would be let the attorney edit it up.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I mean, these, these could be in the minutes. If somebody wanted to see them, you know, we could keep these in the minutes. But let the attorney mark it up, then we'll write it up, and that will be the warrant.
Right. No point confusing people.
Correct, I was going to say.
Yeah, correct. Because, you know, this one's got all kinds of red hatches and all that kind of stuff. I'll clean this one up so they can... Good, okay, that's good.
Okay. Now, we want to get into the solar stuff.
Okay, uh, sure, up to you. Uh, you want me to make a comment of what I found out Monday?
You have to hold on for one minute. I found something interesting in the RSA's creation of a solar sky space easement. Do you know that you can, you can have an easement to the air surface around your building so that nobody can build anything higher?
Mm-hmm.
You know, where I learned that? Watching a movie.
You know where they do that a lot? Big cities like New York City, they don't want to, you put a building up and they don't want the shade to block off there somewhere in the building. So they got to move.
So they do, this goes along with solar too. So, anyway, I'm going to let John tell you what he found.
Uh, I was at a Stratford Regional Planning Tech meeting Monday, I think, this past week. And, uh, in the meeting was the town planner for Milton.
Yep.
And his name escapes me right off the top of my head. However, he's been a planner for the various communities for over 30 years. Uh, he's been a planner at Milton for, since 2017, '18, somewhere around there. Uh, in our discussions, we were talking about charging stations and what communities can do and so forth and so on, and the discussion developed into zoning ordinances. And, um, I made a comment that we don't have a zoning ordinance within the town of Middleton or in our zoning ordinances at all. Nothing's mentioned about a solar farm or a solar panel, nothing. And he says, "Well," and I said, "We would have to treat it as a structure." And he said, "Well," uh, in terms of a building permit, I said, "The planning board wouldn't be involved." Well, he said, "That's not true." If your zoning ordinances does not say that a particular condition is allowed, then they would have, the applicant or the party interested in that particular condition would have to go to the ZBA for a variance. The ZBA would have to make a special variance for that particular entity, whatever they're deciding to do. And then the zoning board can put conditions on the variance that then you go to the planning board and follow all the regulations that are set for it.
And that's for commercial and industrial.
As any solar.
So if a person, a private resident puts a panel up, they still got to go for variance?
That's what he said. So it, it says in here somewhere in the first couple pages that if it's not allowed, it's not, if it's not mentioned, it's not allowed, and you can't, you can't do it.
So the people that have solar panels from here to my house, they've gone through the correct procedure? Is that what we're saying?
Well, yeah.
I don't think so. I mean, I'm not holding it against them.
No, I'm not either, but I'm just saying, I mean...
You think out of building...
I don't, I don't know, but I think we should treat it as something different than a mere structure.
Well, that was, that was my, I didn't underst-- he enlightened me that that's, and I looked it, looked it up in here, and it's, I'll dig it up. I'll tell you what, it's in the first couple pages here.
Okay.
Um, I can't remember where it is here. So, that was, uh, that was my finding, if you will. Okay. I have, uh, made some copies. I don't know if I sent you some, but this gentleman, uh, you never hear one of them either.
No, mine.
No. No, I can't remember. Anyway, uh, he mentioned in terms of ordinances, he mentioned, I think I've sent you the Milton, Town of Milton ordinance, solar ordinance, which is pretty good. They wrote that, uh, two or three years ago, because they have a solar farm up behind the, the highway garage. It used to be an old dump, I think, or, excuse me, it's, whatever it was.
Transfer station.
Yes, thank you. Transfer station. That shows my age, I guess.
Well, that's a good use of a transfer station that's been capped.
Yes.
Can't do anything else in it.
So, uh, he did, he, he was instrumental in writing that particular one. Uh, he also mentioned that you should, and we have talked about this, uh, the town of Durham and the town of Moltenboro. Both of those, I have copies here for you, uh, to look at. Both of them are quite, uh, detailed and extensive, but they, they cover everything.
Well, we have less than either Durham or Moltenboro.
Or we have what?
We have less, but...
Less what?
Less anything.
You may not have less, eh?
Well, I mean, we are not the Travis of Milton or Moltenboro or Durham. I think we should, we should review this.
Okay.
These are just to give us some ideas.
Yes, I know, I'm just saying, we, we don't have as much.
Right.
We don't want to bring in any of the things, so...
Okay, this is, that is, that one you have there is Moltenboro. I didn't title it, but you might want to write on it.
No.
Sorry. I run out of time sometimes. This is Durham.
Can you change that ordinance, please? Want to read?
Durham, this is Durham.
They're always looking, pretending.
Did you say you sent us Milton's, John?
What's that?
Did you say you sent?
I, I, I'm not sure if I did.
I don't know, I did, I don't...
Okay, it's online, so you can look it up, but I'll send you a copy. Okay, now, I did make a copy of this one here.
You did?
Of the one I'm going to tell you about right now. This one here is from Holden's. Holden's?
Holden's.
Way up there. That was not way up there.
Now, it's a little back.
Uh, this is probably, one, two, three, four, four pages long. I'll send you a copy of this. But these are, these are ones to look at. If you remember, we looked at one that was, uh, what the heck was it?
Rochester, you remember that?
Well, we have Rochester, which is detailed as Durham and Milton and Moltenboro. Um, I think this might be, ah, okay. Yeah, here's, uh, here's Durham, they did two, they, they changed some things on there. They had a solar ordinance in Durham, but they updated in February...
Yep.
Some definitions of what systems were. Uh, building mounted solar system, this was in their definitions, listed in their ordinance. Freestanding energy systems, group net metering, net metering posts, small solar systems, they, they defined the size of the system by the kilowatts. Multi-unit residential and non-residential solar systems, nameplate rating, solar energy, blah, blah, blah. So, there's also, I think, Jenny mentioned an order about this article in Municipal Association Town City Magazine dated May, June, uh, 2020.
I don't know that I referenced that one.
Yeah.
I went to the APA, the American Pla-- uh, Planning Association, and they had a lot of stuff in there on solar.
Yeah. Now, they also talk in, oh, here's a good one. So you can, you can, everybody know how to get a copy of that? How to get, like, go on Town and Country?
Yeah.
And just search solar and this stuff pops up.
Yep.
Here's another interesting one that came up. This is the town of Merrimack, and this is, uh, this is dated August 1st, 2023, and this is, must be a proposed article on their taxation. It's called Solar Exemption. Uh, this might be of interest to you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Town of Merrimack has adopted a solar energy system, real property taxation exempt based on assessed value as follows. I won't read it, but you might want to, uh, share this with your board members.
Sure.
Didn't we enact a solar ordinance for induction a few years ago? I thought we enacted something in town.
We did.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Do you want to?
Come and plug the exemption.
As a matter of fact, you made an amendment to that.
It only worked on, at night?
It only for, what did that say?
Thought it's...
Hmm, I'll dig it up in a minute.
Okay.
Really referred only to residential use.
Because while we have a robust commercial industrial district in town, I think the most residential...
We may, you never know. That's what we're here to do.
Well, we're in the business district right now.
Now, I refer that with regards to the one that's already here. Business or not, that is for immediate use, and quite frankly, they're not taxed. If they were taking that, their solar farm and they were selling their energy off like this company wants to do, then it's a taxable unit, not because they're using it for their purposes.
Oh, right.
To offset, yeah.
To offset, you know, to lower their...
Right.
So if you put up a, a big solar panel on your property for your use, then you're not, you're not, you're exempt.
Okay.
But if you sold that, then you pay.
But the only thing that taxes out from that would be the solar, not the property itself.
Okay. Just want to be clear, because, you know, we do have the three differences, the commercial, industrial, residential, so we don't, are you sure everyone?
We don't.
No, we don't.
We don't? We should.
Well, that's why.
Okay.
That's why we're discussing it.
Okay, perfect.
The other thing I discovered too, reading through the, uh, American Planning Association was...
It's from built, is that from?
It doesn't necessarily reduce our electric rates. I found this on there, and I had to take a picture and then put it from my phone to the machine, to the printer, because if I didn't, I'd have to print out, oh, God knows how many pages.
Oh, right.
Because they don't break it up. In fact, I was looking up something today that John gave me. We'll discuss that later, but it was concerning sloping and the, um, international building codes. You can't print anything from them unless you sign on to them and pay a fee.
Oh.
So what I, what I, what I made copies of, I had to take a picture and put it to my printer.
A screenshot? You can do a screenshot.
Yeah.
You can, I want that back.
I, I just want to read what, what she said.
Oh, that was the article.
2015, 2016, so it wasn't a few days ago.
Yep.
Yep. I have to go into the details.
So in a way, in fact, thinking of that, and thinking about that, um, article...
Thank you.
Sure.
That does give us something to work with already.
That's a good start.
Yeah. You know that?
What's that? Gives what?
That article.
Well...
Gives us something to set, to work with.
If, if it's, well, yeah, it does, because what they're doing is not allowed.
What's who's doing?
If pure search comes in here...
Right. It's not allowed, but even after they do, if they, if they get in here, they're going to be taxable, but they get... You make more on the taxes than you would on the profit, profit sharing.
That, that's up to the board to decide, that's not our...
I know.
And as he said, they can go before the ZBA and ask for an exemption if they have a...
They can ask for an exemption of being able to come into town.
They need a variance, a variance.
No, a, a variance.
Yeah, a variance.
They could.
To build.
Yep.
But that doesn't exempt them from paying tat, property tax.
There we go. Somebody to consider.
So, Madam Chair, if I'm not, we might want to think about, uh, to start on solar ordinance, to think about how we want to categorize the various types of solar activities that we want to, uh, make sure that they're within the realm of what the town wants. In other words, we'd have to have a category of residential, commercial, commercial, sell, whatever they are, industrial, that kind of stuff. And then from there, again, I don't want to get regulations that are so finite that you can't drive a mail without, and we can do that, I think, by saying if your system is, is under, we'll have to find out what the number, under 10 kilowatts, that we don't have a problem with that, as long as whatever you do with that system, whether it's a freestanding system or on your roof, that it doesn't impact your neighbors or the environment.
Well, it can have to do with the intent. The town's already agreed that we like solar panels for residential use.
Correct.
The sawmill uses it for their own use.
We could...
These are acceptable, so I mean, if it sells out, then it goes to taxes.
Well, with, that's, the tax is not really our purpose.
No, I know it's...
So I have a question about that. So, I don't know how solar works up here, but you know, down in Tennessee, when my brother bought off solar, um, whatever solar he doesn't use, it doesn't just not go anywhere, usually it goes down and then...
Goes into the grid.
It goes into the grid, but the power company pays him for everything that he doesn't use.
Retail.
So, for somebody who has it in their house, if anything that they're not using and it goes down the grid, would we get tech, would it, for us, it attacks it?
I don't know. That's part of net metering thing, and there are some towns, I don't know, some of those ordinances I passed out to you have descriptions of net metering and what to do in that case, or how they, I hate to use the word, but I guess I'll have to use, how they regulate.
Right.
How that pertains to the ordinance, the net metering, because that's really selling power, as would a farm.
Yeah.
But that's left over, that's a little different than the primary purpose is to make, is to produce power for somebody else's consumption.
Yeah.
The net metering, I, I might be wrong in this, but my concept is if you have solar collectors for your home use, and you have extra, you are allowed to sell that back to the grid for whatever it is.
And some companies will actually, like, give you money, but I heard up here, I'm not sure how true it is, is they just credit your account.
Yeah, well, that's something we'll have to research out, at how that would work into an ordinance in terms of...
And we should also consider home businesses.
Yeah.
You know, if, if someone has solar panels for their garage or lumber mill or whatever...
Chicken coop.
Chicken coop, whatever kiln, whatever home businesses we have, I mean, that, we shouldn't exclude that either, because they're generating power for their own...
Well, you can, you can do it by size, and then if they have access, uh, and they are allowed by state law to, or the companies, I think, have to buy it, I think, I don't know. That's something we have to...
Absolutely.
Figure out.
But if you have your home forge and it takes a lot of power, it goes beyond a normal residential level, you have legitimate need for it.
That's Dan.
In the state of New Hampshire, if you have excess energy that you produce from your panels, it's residential, you get a credit for those months of times that you overuse, that you don't produce enough, you'll get that credit coming back. That's the way it works here.
Yeah, that's what I found out.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't take it as like a one-time thing. It should be the annual cycle, because as we know, in the winter, the sun doesn't appear for a couple months.
You should credit, you're not getting any more.
Exactly, yeah.
Listening to all of this, I think we kind of only did this to put the cart before the horse, because you allow a tax exemption to the residents who use the solar panels, but there was nothing saying they had to get a building permit, or they had to go to the zoning board, no, we never looked into any of this. You can't go back on these people now, but going forward, people are going to have, we're going to have...
I don't know, who, whatever, if you make an addition to your building, I think you have to get a building permit. I mean, if you take, if you get a roof, I guess you got to get a building permit. If you, if you, I don't know, if you put windows in, you got to get a building.
Yes, if you, if you're putting solar panels on, you have to get a permit.
Yeah, that's, that's an addition.
Yes.
What about home maintenance? Replacing a window, is that building, is that anything?
Oh, yes. No, that's a building permit.
Because to check, I've, I've had other towns where they say, if you're replacing the windows, that's just home maintenance, as opposed to, now, if you put it on an addition...
No, that's if they can come out and assess your, they can come out and assess your property, because now you...
Improve the property.
Improve, right.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, gauge, replacing a window...
Yes.
I know, John, replacing one window, right?
Yeah, I mean, I get it, doing all the windows, with the new windows that are saving heat, you can argue this building permit, but where's that one?
Okay, replace five windows every morning.
No, I'm, I'm just saying...
No, I know, I know.
I asked, there was a selective farming kid who said, "I replaced my windows and not getting a building permit, that's home maintenance."
Yeah.
And that was during a meeting. And he, building, building guy was right there, and he's like, "Go ahead, you know, come see my house."
Years ago, when we, when we put a new roof on the house, we didn't need a building permit, because we were replacing incand. They don't use incandes anymore. Back when we did it, you didn't need a building permit, because you were replacing incandes.
Okay. We don't say that.
So if you're replacing your old solar panels, it doesn't count incandes anymore, does it?
No.
No one's, I'm just, I'm just...
I think we have more work to do on this.
I think we got a lot of work to do.
So, uh, do we want to divide up the work by somebody investigating what the net metering thing is? I mean, Dan, you said that, but we want to confirm, no, no offense.
Well, I, I looked in the bill, and I contacted a number of different companies.
Did you contact solar companies, or did you call?
Yeah, all solar companies, they all told me the same thing.
Okay.
If we contact the Public Utilities Commission, they might know some information.
Or, or, or in that, in that, yeah, thank you, Dan. In that, uh, copy of the presentation I gave you was a Stratford Regional Planning, that, the New Hampshire Energy Department?
Yeah.
They would know. And the PUC, the PUC would know.
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, but the PUC is, they're kind of their own little thing, so I would go to the energy place first.
Well, we can always ask, and PUC, they do a lot of...
No, yeah, no, just exhaust all your resources and make sure we understand.
Well, I don't want to have 10 people calling the same company, so who wants to handle that?
Assign it.
You wanna do it?
Sure. I haven't seen another right question asked.
I gotta understand.
Also, John, actually, you know, have Kelly, you can have her reach out to Rebecca on, she just installed solar panels on her house, so she would know if they're gonna get a credit, or if they're gonna get, if they can buy it back.
I'm talking to the neighbor's cat. They're solar powered.
No, but I'm just saying, because she and I talked about it.
Sure. Yeah, so we need, we need to know kilowatts, whether there's a level of kilowatts per hour for residential, industrial, commercial use.
See, I've got the zone, I've got the book on solar ordinance, but it doesn't go into this stuff.
Well, so they can change it.
And they, and this is from 2018, I think.
That'll go nowhere. It's hard to change that.
And that was from the municipal association. We'll just keep plugging away and see what we can find as we go along. You're dealing with Stratford Regional. John's gonna call New Hampshire Energy?
Yep, New Hampshire Energy, the PUC. Yep, I'll contact them, see what they have to say.
Right.
Stratford Regional planning can help us develop ordinances on that. So I will contact them about that.
I spent one night up till midnight, filling all this crap off the computer. Anyone go on to, what do we get on the agenda? I lost my agenda here somewhere. Manufactured housing. The ordinance that we do have is not all that straightforward, and it doesn't really cover a lot. I don't think it's gonna be that difficult. They do have, I'm putting away, right? Your last state ordinance is on it. Rather, state RSA, as I should say. Just add it to my hand, I have it for myself. And... Ah, here it is. We cannot, we cannot stop a mobile home park from coming into town. All we can do, whether they're a over 55 park or a family park, all we can do is make sure that they do what's required of them. There are a number of water tests and stuff that I have said before has to be done before, it's like that new pack that wanted to come in here, they wanna put 100 homes in. Well, you've got wells all around them, all around that area. Is your park gonna be able to sustain without pumping the water from everybody else?
We can't stop them from coming in, but we don't have to, like the state says, they can be so many feet apart, but we can make that, we can change that.
We can impose that, make it bigger, instead of saying they have to be 25 feet apart, we can say that one fifty feet, or something like that.
Well, if you make 25 feet apart, you want 50 feet, 50 feet between the homes, then you've got a 25-foot property line.
I'm just using that for example. I don't know if there's the right numbers or not.
Yeah. Just as an example, like if the state says something, we can make it stretch.
Depends how the wording is in the state regulation. May, we can override. Shall, we can't.
Well, we talked about this workshop, and you were here for that, but we thought that they, we should consider the foundation, making a stronger foundation, not just a couple cinder blocks.
Right.
A slab, right, for, as...
And I agree with that, especially. I mean, given the rains that we've had, you put a modular manufactured home, or whatever, on cinder blocks, all, that home is gonna go way off.
We just want strong donations and room to grow. That way, there's a little more yard. That means they're not on top of each other, like the Lake District and all those fine homes, but we wanna make sure that they're, just breathing in.
Take a ride through Peaceful Plains down in Farmington, in the new section.
Right.
And they've got, I wanna say it's 40 feet between two homes, but I'd be willing to push it to 50.
Well, we just wanna do...
Because they don't, the state doesn't regulate how far apart they are. I know somebody has said to me, well, a building, a house building in town is 5 acres, no more, you don't do 5 acres in a mobile home park, it just don't...
Okay.
You know, that's, that's unreasonable.
Where's the statute that says we have to accept a mobile home park?
There isn't a statute per se, it's just un...
I saw the statute that says you must accept, you can't deny.
No, no.
I don't wanna use the, manufactured housing.
Correct.
But I've, I've never seen anywhere where it says you have to accept a mobile home park. I'd love to see the verbiage on that.
RSA 674 colon 32, Roman numeral one. Municipalities shall afford reasonable opportunities for the site of manufactured housing, and the municipalities shall not exclude manufactured housing completely from...
That's the next scene, yes. Why does that say that we have to accept manufactured housing park?
I'm not sure this is...
I'd like some clarity on that, actually.
Right.
It's kinda...
Yeah, this doesn't say a park, this says a home.
Right, and you can't. And we should, it allows people certain incomes.
Here is, here is what Milton does with their manufactured housing parks.
Yeah.
And what's interesting to me is, I gave you a copy of this, the area, the number C, this is Article 5, manufactured park.
Yeah.
Manufactured home lot spaces shall be a minimum of 21,000. That's a half acre.
Yeah, wow.
That's big.
That's nice. It's wonderful.
Wait a minute, now, let me read this to you. Manufactured home spaces shall be a minimum of 21,000 square feet, a half acre. Poorly or very poorly drained soils shall be excluded from the density calculation. This is another one. Necessary streets, walkways, public utilities, parking areas for motor vehicles, and service buildings to house necessary facilities are prescribed by the Town of Milton Road Standards, whatever those are. Parking spaces, they tell them what they are. All manufactured parks shall have onsite sewage disposal and group wells, unless municipal water and sewers will be. Milton does have some of that. All such parks shall also be located on a site rated to ensure adequate drainage, surface and subsurface block. Then they talk about sanitation, they talk about service buildings, parking spaces. Then there is a zoning, I didn't give you a copy of this one, but I made one of Hampstead. Pretty small. This one here talks about minimum size. Mobile home, this is Mobile Home subdivision regulations. So Mobile Home unit requirements, minimum floor area is 480 square feet. That's a tiny home by definition, my understanding of the International Building Code. With only one single-story accessory building not to exceed 600 square feet. That's a pretty small structure. 600 square feet. That's, well, that's not, that's, that's pretty, accessory, that's pretty big. Anchorage, this is, well, this is pretty loosey-goosey. There shall be proper anchorage and tie-down of the unit to the pad. What's the definition of the pad? If the, the minimum, the minimum, the minimum pad is defined in state regulations, I believe, correct? So we can go beyond that, I believe, okay? And then skirting shall be installed between the pad and the mobile home. Now, this was, this is a very old regulation, 1983, but it's still there, as far as I can tell. So that's just another one. Let's see there. Solar, solar, whole folder of...
John, I think Kate has questions.
Oh, yeah, a lot of questions. My questions are, so are they basing the size of a lot on these modular manufactured houses? Are we concerned about the septic systems? I consider you already brought up the well, rightly so, in groundwater.
And does the sizing of a lot have to do with the sizing of the module?
That would have to be, that would have to be...
The stability of the land.
That would have to be an engineering design with the site plan to come through by a professional design assistant. In other words, I don't know what the rules would be, but it would have to be an accepted system by DES, whatever the...
One system, individual systems?
Right. There, there, I think I'm, I don't know if I'm, I don't wanna repeat myself, but as I get older, I do. There's a development being worked on over in Dover that has condos that are going in. And they have a community septic system, they have three. And, and each individual unit has, just like you're going out to a sewer system, and they go into a large community septic system. It's an in-ground septic system, and they have all kinds of monitoring.
Who maintains that? Who pays for that?
That would be in, that would be in the association that they pay for that. And I would guess that the planning board could require, okay, who's gonna pay for that? Who's gonna maintain that? That would be, the property owner would have to maintain.
And how do we offset the impact to the school? Are your impacts...
That would be a study.
Are your impact fees going to cover something like that?
Yes.
Yeah. Have to be a study. Site plan gives us the authority to say, okay, if you put a, if you put an, if you put a manufactured home park in, okay, how is that going to impact fire, police, and schools? Administration. Yeah, you can, we can require that now without the impact fee. And we can make them pay for those studies. It's like a development, it's just a high cluster development, basically, is what that is.
I don't think the town has to accept. You have to accept modular home housing, but you don't have to accept the modular housing park.
It's, it's, it's like a development.
Then what's, what's to prevent anyone from taking any area of the, and you're, then why even have zoning?
Well, we have zoning because, look, look at Adams Web. What did we do there? What did you do there? You required them to do certain things. We can require a mobile home, excuse me, a manufactured home park to do certain things.
But they're, they, they also went by the basic minimal lot size.
That was the planning board allowed to do that. The planning board allowed them to do that.
That was a subdivision.
Well, this is kind of a subdivision also.
Yes and no.
But the lot size is crazy small.
Well, it's like, is it like, not like cluster development?
Not like, not like the conservation development that we, that we made, the ordinance that we have and created to prevent people from losing up their valuable land.
So I guess maybe the question...
Hold on one second, but you made a statement to me earlier that we can't, that people, landowners are doing what they wanna do with their land, when we were talking about the solar, the guy with the solar park.
So you're thinking of... Prevent people from doing what they want with their land.
Well, I was just within the realm of the rules and regulations.
That's right, and we don't have provision for dividing up the land smaller than, in the rural residential area, smaller than five acres. This is like, that was pre, that was 1960s, before any, and look at the mess they've made over in our area. Perhaps not yours, because you guys still went by the water rules, but the septic systems, individual, we all are individual wells.
Yeah, we don't have individual wells on our side.
Look at the state of the lake today.
We have individual septic, but not wells on our side.
And that's a big savings for you guys, you know, the quality of your water.
And the park, and the park in Farmington that we lived in, each home has, has their own septic, and they have to take care of it. But the well is a community well.
Just like the sequel guidelines the state's offered us, if we are forced to accept mobile home parks, what the state offers us in guidance. And another thing.
Go ahead, Roxanne.
So my question is, we can submit the question to maybe NHNA to say, do we have to accept mobile home parks in our town?
We're gonna die going to.
Well, then I'm probably gonna tell you, but they're directed to an RSA, but it's just gonna say, can we do a warrant article that says, you know, do we have to specifically have a warrant article? John, you shaking your head? No.
I don't think we do.
No, that's why I'm saying, we should just, first of all, ask the question if you have to allow them or not allow them. Because if you can say, no, you don't have to, you just, you need to do it through a warrant article and say you're not, your town does not, doesn't want to...
You can set, my feeling is, on any piece of property, we can set the criteria that we feel is in line with what our charter is, what the town charter is, and when I mean charter, I'm not talking about the legal charter, like the, the charrette, the master plan, all that stuff is taken into consideration how we want to permit land uses.
Right.
That's our function.
But, but I mean, okay, you know, I get that. So I, but my question, my specific, I guess my specific question is, is you know, maybe, I don't know, you should provide examples.
That's fine.
So maybe Kate's like, I don't, we don't want a mobile home parks, but I'm okay with having some condos, I'm just saying that. So could we, I get it, maybe it's not different, but it couldn't, you know, in my mind, it's different, a condo is different than a mobile home park. So could you say, no...
Which also have to look at what the definition of a mobile home is today.
No, 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 but I'm just, I'm just asking the high, I'm asking the high general question. If the majority of us say, if we, the majority of the townspeople say they don't want that, can that be done, and then, I'm just asking the question.
That would be a court case ready to happen.
But I guess also, this is why we have the opportunity to redo these ordinances, because we can kind of make it the way that is gonna be beneficial for our town. So, or personally, me, I don't want to see a bunch of manufactured homes or any home built one after the other, and they're all stacked in like cordwood. But if we went ahead, as the planning board and as the town, and said, okay, you know, you can do this, but they have to be, you know, double or triple, the width part of another place, we, you could potentially have it so everyone's...
Right, and you said you have to have it on the fly, I mean, you have to, you know, I mean, you have to make the criteria. But my, my, but my question was, first of all, is, do you have to allow them? Like Kate's asking, do you have to? Okay, John, go ahead.
I would highly recommend that we all read RSA 674 colon 32.
Wait a minute. I got 674 what?
674 colon 32. And that's under land, that's under manufactured housing.
Isn't that the one I just said?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
And what it says, and this is typical legislative language. Municipalities shall afford reasonable opportunities for the citing of manufactured homes. Meaning, if you go on, I think what they're referring to is individual lots.
Yep, right.
A municipality which adopts land use control measures shall allow, in its sole, in its sole discretion, manufactured housing to be located on individual lots in most, but not necessarily all, land areas in the district zone to permit residential uses within the municipality, or in manufactured housing parks subdivisions created for the placement of manufactured housings on individually owned lots in most, but not necessarily all land areas in the district zone to prevent, to prevent residential uses within the municipality, or in all three locations. Did everybody understand that?
Yeah.
I didn't either. So you gotta read that about 10 times to figure that out. But I think what they're saying is, you can have certain zones that you allow manufacturing homes to park in, and certain zones that you don't.
I gotta look up the law.
You have to read this whole thing, because I'm, I'm, no...
Because that was quite...
So we don't deny manufactured housing. I think that there are covenants around the lake that do, for whatever that's for.
And it's not as lot size.
But the size, the lot size, and it's more dense in this area of town, for a reason.
It says here, municipalities permitting manufactured... It says here, municipality permitting manufactured housing parks shall afford realistic opportunities for the development and expansion of the manufactured housing parks. In order to provide such realistic opportunities, lot size and overall density requirements for manufactured housing parks shall be reasonable.
But wait a minute, so what did that, so wait a minute, what did you just, what did you just?
That means you can decide how large the lot is.
Yeah, so, no, but.
There's nobody that says what's reasonable.
No, but he says reasonable, municipality's permitting manufactured housing parks. So it sounds to me as, as a municipality, you could say, you don't have to permit a park. Do you not, does that not, it says municipality.
Yeah, interpretation.
That was, that's mine, reading that. So it's, I think as a town, you could say no, or you can say yes.
Somebody has to go find what the law says in the R S A, about permitting or not.
Because what I don't.
That is the whole question, both of them.
Exactly. Because what I don't understand is that, how you can, say they have a hundred acres there, and they're going to divide it into so many lots based on what, I don't know what. And then somebody over here has got a hundred acres and he's going to get bigger lots or smaller lots either, is it what, I don't know what?
Kate, there are standards put forth by the state, how, what the minimum size lots have to be, what.
I don't know where that is.
Well, that.
Are those the rules, are those the guidelines that the boards would go along?
Those are, I believe, in statutes, I believe somewhere.
So that would probably be like, so what would happen, Kate, is the, the state has the rules, we as a town can make stricter rules, right?
Right, so if, if the state indeed does have those rules, then those are the guidelines you have to go along.
Yeah, right, there's like, you don't have to put it on a slab, but they have rules about what, what the, what the tiers have to be, what the underpinning has to be.
I'm not more, I'm not concerned about the manufactured homes itself, but I'm concerned about the use of the land, the best use of the land.
You know, there has to be fifty feet, I think is the minimum size, you can go bigger.
And I'm also concerned about.
How, how big?
The impacts on that.
Fifty-two.
Fifty, okay, fifty-two, whatever.
Not in here. I, I know that the young, that they made them fifty-two, twenty-eight or fifty-two.
And I'm also concerned about not understanding why you even have a zoning ordinance if you have to allow.
Because you got to make sure that they're going to do.
If you catch a housing, I don't see why you are forced to allow. We have, we have areas of town that have increased density. Not, not everything is, is five acres. And the five acres was justified because of the density around the lake and the impacts upon the lake.
I think the zoning ordinance is to, if we want to impose stricter guidelines, you know, what more, more room and better foundations. I mean, we want people, if they're building in town, we want them to build solid futures in town. You know, we're not here, you know, we want a tent park out there that blows away the next year, we could do that. But I think we want a community, we're building a community here, based on the community we have, you know, and I understand the Lake District with roads and the spacing is not up to standard, but it's, it's existing in there. It's existing, it's where it is. I mean, it's like if we own, if the town owns a road, it's not up to standard, the town is bringing up the standard. And unfortunately, it costs money.
But I, right, but I mean, if you're putting in the manufactured homes and the park, whatever, who wants to hold it, um, that only sits on the, the owner there. So we, and that's how we do it, it's like, that's not, that is not town maintained, that is town maintained by.
Private property.
Right, correct. Even though it's got many mobile home, manufactured homes in there and whatever, based on the criteria we would set for us. I just want to put that.
John, I have another, I just thought of this. So we went ahead and we did make a ordinance for a manufactured home park, um, and said, like, you know, they had to have a certain foundation and all that. Would that rolled into, if somebody went and bought ten acres and wanted to rent a manufactured home, would they have to run that same foundation, or would we have to update another ordinance?
We could put in the ordinance, and we could subdivide it into, right, right here, it's kind of divided up. If you, you have to give, this goes for reasonable opportunities to cite manufactured homing on a lot. So we can say, uh, you, you put a manufactured home on a lot, you have to abide by the setbacks on that lot. And a manufactured home must have a slab, concrete slab with a frost-free foundation. Your septic system would be the same as, as an individual home. We could set a minimum size, no smaller than four hundred and whatever it is, um, on an individual lot. That would be putting, that would be a structure instruction, if you will, allowed in a residential rural area, not allowed in Middleton Four Corners. I don't know.
Would be the opposite.
What's that?
This is a highly dense area, this is the area where we wanted development to create kind of a town like that.
Well.
The rural res, rural, what's the number one thing people want?
Okay, okay, using that as an, as an example. I'm not saying that, that you don't want, uh, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying you can zone, I think what this says, six seventy-four says, you can zone certain areas to allow and not allow, which would take into account density, if you don't want density, if that's a concern. But manufactured homes are unique in terms of their structure, but it's no different than putting up condos. It's the same thing.
Or a solar panel.
Or, well, well, kinda, but I mean, it's, it's, it's like a developer coming in and wants to, like this developer putting up a, these are pretty high-end condos in Dover, off of Tolan Road.
Yeah.
I don't remember what Tolan Road is, okay. So, uh, you could have somebody come up here and say, okay, this guy up here is, I'm going to put in senior fifty-five, I'm going to put in, no, I'm not going to do that because I want, uh, I want to expand my market. I'm going to put in two-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage condos, three per building. Whatever, it's the same thing.
I'm not saying it's not.
No, no, I'm just saying it's, and we can regulate that, just like we can over home, except there are minimum standards that we have to meet, that the state says you have to do, and we have to give people reasonable opportunity and reasonable regulations to allow that to happen. So we have some work to do, I think.
I understand as well.
So asking the question of what's allowed and not allowed, you can go to New Hampshire Housing Authority, they'll be able to tell you that. Interpret the law.
See if you can find case law on it, because there is case law on that.
Well, case law is in the, is in the big book.
Yep.
You know what the big book is?
Yep, what's the law?
You know what the big book is? You don't know what the big book is? You don't have the big book?
No, what big book?
Yeah.
This book, right here?
That, that's the one.
Oh.
I'm waiting for the movie.
Kate, I think case law is in there, I think.
Yes, it is.
Where's it get that?
Uh, we have, I don't know, we're extra copies, we should have extra copies someplace.
There's one in the town hall.
Should have some in your budget to buy or one.
We have, but no one's coming in.
This is twenty-two to twenty-three.
Everyone's are coming in.
Did we order enough for everybody?
I certainly did.
Good enough.
And they're coming to me.
I'm going to get it before it comes to you.
Yeah, they're coming to me because the last ones that came in, somebody in the town hall stole three of them.
Why didn't you get one?
I know who took them.
I only took one.
Have you checked eBay? It probably.
Yeah.
Probably not.
I, I'll just give you a little hint. When I was first getting involved with the planning board and the zoning board, I knew nothing about nothing. And I think Roger or somebody gave me this book, because I used to keep them upstairs, right? And he said, start reading this thing, because we didn't have a book.
Yeah.
We just had this. If you can't go to sleep at night, this is something you can, no, this will put you to sleep in about three pages.
When I first started getting this wrong up here, I went to John Lemond and asked him about those books, and I wasn't on the planning board or anything, and everybody would give me a new one because he knew I had taken all of the land use laws, our land use, um, law courses. And that hasn't changed much over the years even. They become stricter in a lot of ways, but they really haven't changed. But you look in there, you'll find case law, you can Google it on the internet.
It's on page four, twenty-four. Case law.
Oh, case law, because I'm not reading that.
Yeah. You don't want the R S As, because not all of them are in there.
These just pertained to, pertained to land use.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we have some work to handle.
Yes, we do.
All right.
So with the condo, you brought up condos a few times, is there any ordinance for condos?
It's a building.
But if it was.
It's the same thing as what Mr. Cherio was trying to put.
It would still have to follow the ordinances that we are in place.
Yeah. And if it's, if it isn't specifically allowed, then he has to build for a variance. So, just like, we have a definition of an accessory building, we didn't use that.
No.
And we have definitions of multi-family units, which are duplexes, could be triplexes, who live.
When we moved up here, we built out an in-law apartment in our house for us to live in, and put our daughter and her grandsons in the main house. When they had to move to Maine, we moved upstairs, and we were going to rent out the downstairs. Roger and I went head to toe on this. He said, you're not going to do it, blah, 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 so go ahead and stop me. And he put forth in the ordinances, in the face of the new law that was coming out, he's trying to prevent people from renting out an accessory building or an in-law apartment, and you can't do that. And that is absolutely forbidden, you cannot stop it. And there is the R S A on that.
Future ordinance, maybe.
Anybody got one? Do you guys come up with anything from the zoning board that we need to start looking at?
We'll discuss it on Tuesday night. Okay. I think the zoning board, after, uh, town meeting, or after we get the zoning ordinances that we want to do, and I think the solar one is the one, and if we have time to do the manufactured housing, fine. If we don't, we don't. But my suggestion is, in terms of our task for twenty-four, is start looking at the zoning ordinances that we have now and refine those. There, there's, we need to update those, we need to correct some things, we need to add some things. And that takes some work. Also, I think we need, and, and any changes to a zoning ordinance must go before the town on a warrant. We have to have hearings on those. The next thing that we need to do is review our site regulations. Those do not have to go before the town, those can be adopted by the planning board, but there still has to be a hearing on the changes that we make. So that would be a big task for next year. Now, if I may, so, if I may, I would like to comment on the, the performance of the board here, or the, yeah, the planning board. We've accomplished, we'll have a minimum of three ordinances. One of the impact fee ordinances that I think the town was waiting for for eighteen months. And I think we've done an excellent job on putting that together. The aquifer one was kind of a no-brainer because that did it for us. Hopefully, we get the solar one completed. That's, those are three major, uh, plans, and I, I think it's a compliment to the board that we've been able to, to get there. We're not, we're not there yet on the solar, but I, I'm confident we can get there. And that's a testament to everybody's concentration in work on these meetings, and it's, uh, it's nice to see that we get things done. So thank you, Madam Chair. What's that?
You got public comments yet?
No, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. The other thing I want to tackle, and hopefully, and I don't think this will take a lot of time, is the childcare situation, because it's, it's vague in the ordinances. And I've had an issue with the zoning board on this, on, on who's responsible for what. And there is no special condition or special whatever that they need for daycare center if it's within the home. But they do need to go to the licensing board, irregardless of how many kids it takes to care of, because the only way to get the proper inspections done is for the licensing board to tell them what they have to do. We need to spell this out. Other than that, everything John said is what I agree with. And one other issue, we don't have a sloping ordinance either. And I have an issue with the house that's going up on that lot down the corner of Sunrise and Silver, because he's digging into that wall, and if something isn't done with it, that house up on the hill is going to end up in his lot. So we don't, we, we have, we have a, an ordinance for sloping, I guess more like it explains what it is, but I printed these off today to show how they should be under the International Building Code, and we can enforce these. So I don't know how far you want to go with that, Roxanne, or if that falls to us, because he needs to either put up a retaining wall or change the slope on that wall that he's got up there.
Well, that's not the board of select, I mean, that's a.
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
That's ours?
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, but who would go to code enforcement and say we need to enforce this?
Okay, code enforcement, so we got.
We just need our level of right.
He called me on that the other day.
Information.
Yeah. So I've got the information here, because he gave me the wrong information to look up, and as I was reading through it, I found what I needed.
Now, if the homeowner has questions about sloping ordinance, whether it's town or international, where do they go to ask questions?
The building is back down.
Okay. I was, I was wondering, you know, if anyone has any questions about that?
I believe that, I believe our zoning ordinance, I'm not sure, but I believe, it does, it does refer that to the building code as kind of an overall, you know, what's your structure supposed to look like, and then.
I just want them to go to a person so they can ask and interact, I mean, do they go to the select and the planning board?
No, no, they go to the code enforcement, building spec.
I mean, you know, everybody says it's not ours to contend with, but you know, we're supposed to be here to protect the public and safety and all that good stuff, then somebody's got to do something with this because that's not.
We haven't received any complaints from the neighbor?
Huh?
We haven't received any complaints from the neighbor?
Oh, yeah.
The, the whole neighborhood had this complaint about that property.
But has the one up on the hill complained specifically? We got in that wall, that he's digging into that wall of soil.
That, I, the last time I drove by it, which was just a couple of days ago, and I actually had an opportunity to really look, because they cleared up more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and with all the rain that we've had, and our whole area, the way the water runs and.
Have the residents of that home up on the hill made, have they made any complaints or anything?
Amazingly, um, I, they have not come to me, which usually if you have complaints in that area, they come to me, I don't know why. Yeah. But I mean, it's, I definitely can see where it's, it's a concern.
Huh?
I have just one question.
Go ahead.
You were talking about Jordan Drive, no?
No.
We're talking about.
Sunrise, Sunrise and Silver Street, that house, that building on the corner.
Has he got a, 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 a,
I was curious, I was, because I knew that there was a, Mr. St. Pierre had a building over on, on Jordan Drive, I don't know.
But that's a red house. That property doesn't really exist.
On Jordan Drive?
Where?
Uh, I don't know, the nap-a-lot, on the top of my head.
Is it way back, the closer?
No, no, it's close to, like, actually going down the hill. I, that's why I assumed it was that. My mistake.
Hold next to Eric's house.
Huh?
Think that's a lot next to Eric's house.
Yeah, that's my mistake, that's why my mistake.
Right, and he's already, he's already made some, um, what's his face, Carl was talking to me about that one too. What did I just do with that paper?
Sorry, maybe not.
Um, because he's made a complaint about something he can't get. Do I have it on this piece, or is it at home? Nope, it's not on this piece, so it's gotta be on the piece I have at home.
Mr. St. Pierre made a complaint to you?
No, not to me, he went to Carl. Um, because he wants to put an addition on his house, that's what it was. Wants to put an addition on his house, house that was just built, I believe.
Across the street from me?
Across from you? No, and it's the wrong guy.
He just built, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's that.
I know there's a guy over there, you know where the, you know where the in-law cabin is at Beach Two?
Yeah.
On our side, okay. Well, there was an empty lot there, and now it's being, it's being built on. The guy wants to add an addition, and he hasn't got the room.
Yeah, it's empty.
And of course, the guy next door doesn't want to.
Sure so. So that's a ZVA question?
Right.
I did have.
I, I did tell that to, um, Carl, he's gotta go to ZVA.
Are you, any questions from the public?
Sure.
John, how come you didn't get a, um, sample ordinance for solar from Stratford Regional? They usually.
I haven't asked.
No, that's, I'm just curious, because it's just like the Aquafur.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure I do that. It's surprising that the state doesn't have.
And then the other.
They, they certainly had one on wood furnaces, outdoor furnaces. They certainly had one for, uh, wind power. They don't have one on solar, and I think that's because they're kind of still wrestling with standards and so forth on that.
So wait, when we ask the town, what, the townspeople, and they respond to your questionnaires, what is the one thing they love about Minnesota?
I don't know, what is it?
The world nature of our town. On solar.
Oh, okay, well, here's a model one right here.
The rural nature of the town.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
They have the municipal association. They wrote, they wrote one.
But that board was what year?
Um.
In the front.
In the front. Two thousand eighteen. At Mark Forgé.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I haven't contacted him.
Yep.
Mr. Forgé that was here talking about impact fees, he wrote this.
He wrote the model.
He wrote the model for this. I, I, Janet asked me to contact him, and I just haven't had time to do that yet. But that's, uh, uh, that's a, that's one we can look at now. It's, it's, um, it's kind of general in terms of what you can do with certain things.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
And it had an explanation in there as to a racking system, which they also have a picture in there of.
Yeah, uh, then they give you the statutory limitations, uh, solar basics, and.
And that's where the new, that's where the policy, other.
Definitions. Uh, now, this, this thing here is similar, this, this ordinance here looks very similar to Durham's order.
Yep.
So.
Yes, Dan.
Yeah, who, who from the board was invited to the ZVA meeting on Tuesday night?
What was your question?
Who's invited? Someone was supposed to be invited from this board to the ZVA meeting on Tuesday night.
Well, if they were to be invited, then somebody should have contacted me, and nobody did.
Well, so they're having a meeting Tuesday night, so we can find out what you guys want, what you, what your suggestions are, et cetera. And nobody's invited anybody?
No, but I can tell you, you need to go through, since you guys are the ones that handle the variances, you should go back and go through and look at the different ordinances, and see if there's anything in any of the ordinances that really need to be upgraded or brought into two thousand and twenty-three versus when they were, when they were done in two thousand and seventeen. Things have changed since then. So if you find anything, you should attack it, and then bring it to us and say, we think this should be changed, why, and what you would like to see in it.
So that's what you're looking for?
That's what we're looking for.
Okay, so we'll just start somewhere, and we start going through them?
Yeah, just start going through them one by one.
What you might do, Dan, is, uh, you haven't had a lot of activity?
Okay.
Okay, so what you might want to look back is some of, uh, maybe some of the history on some of the activity and what they are, what are some of the things that popped up? If you don't see anything in terms of the ZVA, then you got nothing, that's fine. We just want you to, to, to take a look, and, and if you see anything that, that's propped out, fine. If you don't see anything that's proper, that's fine too.
Okay, I just wanted to see what you guys want.
Yep.
Because you were supposed to, you were supposed to.
So what, what prompt did the ZVA create this course of action?
I.
You requested?
I requested a long time ago, when, before Ken Anderson left here. You've got to sit down with your board and start going through the ordinances. You're the ones that give the variances. And if these, these don't apply anymore, we need to change them. But you need to be able to tell us what has, what you feel has to be changed.
Same thing with code enforcement.
Right.
Code enforcement, same, well, what, in, in, uh, site prep.
Yeah, the technology's changed, everything's changed, yeah.
Exactly.
I understand. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for your time.
So I'll make sure that they get going with, uh, past activities, and don't forget to look over them.
No, don't be overwhelmed, because there's a lot of work.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, where do we start, where you want to?
And don't try getting them all done at once, you know, if we do three or four, then get them on the ballot, that's fine.
That's what I tried to tell them, is, you know, let's just look at one ordinance at a time.
That's all.
Go through it, and let's pick a place to start.
And we've got all next year.
Okay.
All right, I, before we, um, leave, we've got another meeting on the thirty-first, then our regular meeting on September fourteenth, and we've got another one on September twenty-eighth, and October twelfth is our regular, and then October twenty-sixth. I've booked these already with Carol.
So they're on the calendar?
Yeah, and they're all Thursdays.
Right, but you gotta realize, like John said, you know, as we're putting these together, we have to look at the timelines on what the calendar is.
And, and yes, and I asked Carol that yesterday, and she was gonna find out for me as to how, how much time we have to do public hearings, to get them to the attorney, get them back, and put them to public.
No, but if you look at the calendar that's on the NHMA as far as what, where the guidelines are, we have to have the public hearing by this date.
Right, that's what I said.
Well, but that's not Carol's dog to do, for you, Dan, I'm, I'm just saying.
She's got the, um, she's got the, the dates for the, for the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
But that's available online too, you could go up and look up from the NHMA, the front.
Oh, all right.
And it'll show you the calendar if you can. I mean, I just, I don't want to be mean about it.
No, but that's why I didn't book anything at the end of October.
That's right.
No.
Yeah, so go up and look, because there's a couple different formats you can look at, and, and, because I just want to make sure, like, we are following, we hit the dates we need to, because otherwise, if we don't, we're not gonna be able to get up in the walk, or on the, we're not gonna be able to get it on the voting day.
That's why I didn't go any further than October.
Yep.
And I know the zoning board and the planning board stuff happens much earlier on than, like, the budget.
Yep, I know.
And, you know, the ballots aren't long enough, we don't want to overwhelm voters and confuse them.
Right. These are the ones that have to get out.
Yeah, the, the ones that are gonna impact people, the ones that are historically, in the last year, that have come up. You know, just make the most of our.
We've got two done, if we can get the solo one done, I'll be happy.
I'm just saying, make, make the most of our taxpayers' time, voters' time, so they make it easy for them to say yes.
Yeah.
Right, because people aren't looking for more regulations.
They see, when they see the reading, they're just gonna say yes.
Well, or, it depends how they are, I mean.
That's right, depends what's going on, if you've got it.
We're trying, you know, if we need, and if we need an informative piece of paper nearby saying, this is why we have to change it, it's not a bad idea, so people are busy, they're not paying attention.
All right, so do we have anything else? Y'all set?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Oh, um, entertain a motion.
Go move it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-three.
I'll second it then.
Where are you going?
Public access states.
Did you just adjourn?
No, not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kate, did you have any more questions, Kate? I got questions, I, I hold back on questions, because I don't wanna.
You can ask them anyway, go ahead.
I gotta tell, I gotta tell everybody that Alex Comoles.
Oh, yes, yes, I saw that, my daughter.
I don't know her name, but yeah.
Oh, yeah. She, yes, and she was on her child, she said, my daughter sent me.
Oh, she is?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.